It is six o'clock and I call to order the August first, two thousand twenty-three, City Commission Meeting. Please call the roll.
Mayor Hassel.
Here.
Commissioner Butler.
Here.
Commissioner Motta.
Here.
Commissioner Morse.
Present.
Mayor, we have four commissioners present. The quorum of three has been met.
Very good. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since this is the first legislative meeting of the month, we will open up public comment. This is for commenting on items not on any of the agenda items tonight. Members of the public, please come forward, sign your name and residential address or whatever organization you're representing for the record, and so those people at home who are watching can also know. You'll have five minutes, can only speak once, must stop when the timer sounds. We will not get into a debate or answer questions, but will take your comments under advisement. Does anybody have any public comment on items that aren't on the agenda for this evening? Very good. We will close that. Are there any commissioner comments?
Last night, I sat in on a League of Kansas municipalities webinar, Katie and Katie Jackson and Andrew Lawson. One of the things I mentioned that they seem to really be interested in is our practice of intergovernmental luncheons, where we get together and share information once a month, because evidently, a lot of communities don't do that. And I think it has real benefits for us to know other elected officials and be able to call them by first name, not embarrass ourselves at all. But anyway, and to work on joint projects and identify projects that we can both work on. So I think that's especially helpful. Just wanted you to know that that was, I made a contribution to that. And most recently, through the six weeks this summer, the Staley School of Leadership Studies, that K-State, has hosted the Mandela Fellows, twenty-five students from Sub-Saharan Africa, who visit here pretty much every summer, but they have just graduated and are on their way home or onto their next site. But it's always a rewarding experience to help talk about our system of democracy and what those processes are. Sometimes it's more embarrassing than others, but for the most part, it is, and they are ever so curious. So I just wanted to mention those things. Thanks.
All right, very good. We will move on to the consent agenda. These are items that are routine and housekeeping nature, or items that have been previously reviewed by the commission. The commissioner may request an item may be removed for separate discussion and consideration. Does the commission have any questions or comments about any of the consent agenda items?
I would just, I'd just like to draw attention to item E1, which is professional services. Is that true? Well, it's, there's, it is for the wastewater treatment plant, solids treatment upgrade and expansion. And the estimate, a couple of years ago, started out at about ten million dollars, and now it's up to sixteen million. And it's a big deal for our community, and it's really something we have, infrastructure that we just have to invest in. And so I wanted to just call attention to some of these big-ticket items that we get involved with. And I think that was the only one that I really wanted to speak to. Thanks.
Does that mean you're volunteering to be on that search committee?
No.
How about you other jokers?
I'll be happy to do that.
Okay, very good. All right, well, that'll be Commissioner Butler for that then.
And there's two other things under professional services which I think are worth mentioning. We've been trying for a long time to do something with the lots on Lee Mill Village, and so it looks like we've got a group that we can negotiate with, which will put those back on the tax rolls, which is one thing, and may also help with workforce housing, the way it looks, so that's a good thing. And then item three is the animal shelter, but this is just an agreement to continue negotiations with the group that submitted a request, Perry Paws, to run the shelter, and ultimately, that should save us some money, but also maybe enhance some services. So we'll see how the final negotiations work out on that, but there's not an agreement to actually do that yet. It's just to further negotiate.
I would like to just say that I hope that there are some actual, there's actually some criteria in this agreement for performance, so that at no time in the future are we embarrassed because we didn't think of something ahead of time. And I'm not being critical, I just want to be sure that that's, that we do that.
I was on the selection committee, and they did actually submit a page of metrics, which I thought John would really be impressed with, because it had, it had criterion for performance. So I was impressed. There was a few things that weren't totally nailed down, and that's why we're going to continue negotiations. Just some simple things, like they concentrated more on cats and dogs, and occasionally we get a rabbit, a ferret, and so we want to cover that, and there's some differences on maintenance. I think they were concerned about the trees, and they wanted the city forestry to handle any problems with trees. So we got to nail those things down, but rest assured, there's going to be a long list of metrics, because we want to make absolutely certain that we get improved service out of this.
It wasn't that proposal, a hundred pages or some crazy thing? And so there's, they put some thought into some of this, but yeah, I understand that we want to try to cover it, anticipate as much as possible.
And I too am happy that the Lee Mill Village lots are sold. That's, we bought those at a property tax sale. These are the last of them, right, Ron? And we'll have them back on the, on the property tax rolls, and we can all sigh, a relief. You know, who knew it would be so hard to sell lots? I mean, people do it every day, and it's taken five years or four years or something. So, but I'm glad that it'll be finally over. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and open up a public comment on the consent agenda items. Same rules stand, five minutes, state your name. Nope. Okay, is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Yeah, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Your second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
All right. Item one on the consent agenda is consider reducing the landscaping requirements and setbacks for the Manhattan High parking lot. Please, what was welcome, Director of Community Development?
Is this, or there?
There it is. Sorry.
Okay. Good evening, Stephanie Peterson, Director of Community Development. We have before you this evening municipal facility review for Manhattan High School. We'll be looking at eliminating the parking setback requirement, as well as some landscape screening, the location of where this parking lot would be located. You see the high school there to the north. The existing parking lot is immediately east of the parcels that are indicated there. I will note that this aerial shows three residential homes there. Those have since been raised. Here's a conceptual idea of what that site layout would look like. You can see that the school district tried to match the existing parking lot, very similar layout. There we go. So this would be a concrete median, and then also just have the painting, painted areas at the end, rather than that raised landscape median. Closer look at what that layout looks like. One thing, a couple of things that I'll note, and then I also have kind of a summary slide of what they're looking to do. In order to match the existing parking lot to the east, they are asking for this setback here along Oak Street, which would typically be twenty feet, for it to be eliminated. You can see here that there is a sidewalk, so that's this light gray strip here, and then it kind of jogs up to the north, and it continues along the back of the curb of that sidewalk. Let's see. The, so the MDC actually has landscaping requirements that, when we go back and evaluate that, I think there were really written for retail in mind. We didn't really anticipate having to apply those for some of our public or institutional facilities, especially when they're in residential districts. So there is a landscaping requirement as of now, that would require landscape screening. So, I keep losing my mouse, I'm sorry. That would require landscape screening along this entire south side, really buffering that parking lot from that public right-of-way. That was really intended to make sure we could kind of knock down some of that headlight glare, so that you don't have headlights, especially going through a drive-through, shining into public right-of-way, potentially creating a safety issue for the vehicles using that public street. However, it's recognized that most schools are operating during daylight hours. They do occasionally have some nighttime activities. So that was something I guess that we should just keep in mind there. The other issue with the landscape screening along the parking lot is you can see the sidewalk abuts that curb. There would be no room to put that, the screening there as it's shown. Staff had a kind of way whether we wanted to make sure we could have landscape screening there, or whether we wanted to construct a sidewalk. That sidewalk has been a missing link that we've talked about for years. There's a out-of-bus stop that's over along, further to the east here. The, you know, the idea that people could walk along this road to get to the zoo, or individuals that are utilizing, utilizing this parking lot, they would actually have access, that would be on a paved surface. So we believed that the, kind of the greater public benefit here would be to have that sidewalk and then eliminate that screening. Also, with having the sidewalk here kind of hugged up tight against that curb, we're trying to preserve some of these massive existing oak trees that are along this street. If we get kind of further away from the parking lot curb, there's a greater risk that those would die during construction. The school district has also asked for, through this municipal facility review process, for elimination of the curved landscaping islands that would be with this painted area right here. Again, that would match what has, is on the east parking lot. It also, they indicated it makes it a little bit easier for snow removal and maintenance of that parking facility. And then lastly, elimination of having trees within these raised areas. First, they're asking that there be no raised area, but if there were, part of the concern was having security cameras. I believe, and the school district representatives are here tonight, I believe they were going to have a security camera maybe located somewhere around here, so having that tree, they wouldn't have a good visual of everything going on in that parking lot. Here, just kind of a summary of the request with this municipal facility review. I did kind of consolidate the interior parking lot landscaping requirement, those trees within that raised landscaped island. And then another look at the site layout. This did go to the planning board on July thirteenth. There were no public comments that were received during that hearing, and they voted to recommend approval of this municipal facility review on a vote of seven-two-zero. With that, I will stand for any questions that you may have.
All right. Anybody got questions?
Just got one comment. What seems strange to me is, you know, we went through this code review, and we put all this stuff in there, and then I guess the first two times it's come up, the other one was, I think, Bluemont School.
Correct.
Decided we didn't like our code. Should we relook that?
So, the answer is yes. We've actually have made some adjustments to the landscaping requirements already. You had an amendment, I believe it was earlier this year, and we kind of reduced those down a little bit, because we saw that they were maybe a little too strict. What we're looking at doing now is we have a public institutional zoning district. There are no, it's written in the MDC, but we currently don't have any properties that are zoned as that public institutional use. We are going to look at, how do we reflect the landscaping requirements that are appropriate for those uses within that district? So we would likely see that there's going to be a reduction of the landscape requirements for any public institutional use that would receive that zoning district. Does that?
That sounds good. I mean, I, you know, I especially like the concept here. If we used our current zoning thing, we'd kill the oak trees.
Yes.
Which seems sort of crazy. We had a lot of people that liked the oak trees, so it seems to make sense on the surface. It just seems to be a disconnect between our rules, and then, you know, the idea was streamline the rules, so we didn't have to go through these, you know, procedures for changes, and it doesn't seem to be working yet. So if you can help fix that, greatly appreciated.
I think public institutional would almost nearly eliminate our need for a municipal facility review. Some of the others you've seen have had to deal with signs, because we don't anticipate signs in a residential district. So we're looking at that.
Linda, did you have something else?
I do. I, I object actually to eliminating the landscaping requirements. It's just because the school district owns it, and I've watched some of the other schools where the actual amount of green space on the property is being eliminated, greatly reduced, let me say it that way. And so I want us to be careful. I believe that the children at the schools, at least the other schools, these are high school students, it might not be as significant that they, but I think we want to be cautious too, and not just have a string of them come in and we just approve them, one after another. I think we give it, and the planning board gives it thoughtful consideration. I want to be as efficient with parking. I believe this high school is, requires a lot of parking. We're moving the freshman class there this fall, but I want to also make sure that there's something, I mean, right now, we're having hundred-and-five-degree days, and parking lots are really hot. And so I'm not trying to, I'm afraid that I notice more of a reluctance to perform maintenance in some of the areas by the, maybe the school district. Try to lessen their burden of, you know, mowing and snow and all the, and trimming. Can we be assured that the trees on the west are going to stay? Is, that's not?
Here?
That's not their land, right?
So this is, this is city property. It's part of the zoo.
Okay.
This, we've actually worked with the school district back and forth. Originally, they kind of, they proposed a grading plan that would cut quite a bit into these trees. After further conversations, they agreed to build a retaining wall right here to be able to maintain those. So that was part of that, that kind of compromise and conversation that we had. So yes, to my knowledge, a majority of those trees along that western edge will stay.
Okay, good. I know there's a steep grade difference.
Yes.
Between the lower parking lot and the upper parking lot.
Yep.
And likewise, with the state property to the west with the trees, and I appreciate the need probably for a retaining wall. How tall will it be? Is it two and a half feet, is what I read? Is that about what we're still?
That, I believe, is what was said at Planning Board. I will ask the school district, Tricia's saying yes.
Okay.
I was going to have her answer that.
Well, I just don't want to get into the practice of negating. We make commercial interests and residential have some landscaping, as for the good of, you know, the whole community. So I just want to be cautious before we just start giving blanket approval to eliminate. I don't know if there's a new thinking at the school district, or a new landscape person there, or what might be, but I just want us to be cautious, and because it is what we require that they're supposed to do. Okay, thanks.
And I can say, I think Tricia will probably speak to this as well, but we did go back and forth between, we really had three different factors we had away, either landscape screening along the parking lot, a sidewalk, or the street trees. And so at the end of the day, we decided those massive street trees and the sidewalk were worth more than making room, or eliminating one of those other two, to have these little grasses that would block the parking lot. So I would say that there was, that was a conversation that occurred between city staff and the school district. So we wouldn't completely eliminate the landscaping requirement. Here, we just decided those massive street trees probably were in the best public interest than little grasses to provide some screening.
Yeah, I got one email on this topic, concerned about flooding, and the fact that this would create more runoff, and they were opposed to us approving this. And I didn't know the details on that. Is there any, is this going to increase the amount of water runoff? I mean, I'm sure it will, because it used to be, you know, residential.
Correct.
Is that going to cause a problem?
It would increase it. That's not something that we actually evaluate as part of municipal facility review. That was being worked out prior to this request coming forward. So Rob's here, he can speak to that, because it's his department that's been working on, I think it's a stormwater fee in lieu, that they're working on with the school district.
I don't know if we, well, I'll speak real quickly. So the school district does have an existing underground detention immediately to the east of what's being proposed, so you can, let me come up there.
There we go.
So, there's an existing underground detention pond here, and in fact, they've already got a stub of a storm sewer that kind of stops right here. My understanding from the drainage report, that was initiated when the demo permits were issued for the demolition of the homes. That's kind of what kicked it off for Public Works. So Brian and his staff reviewed that, and essentially, that stormwater will go into that underground detention, and then it goes into a series of pipes and so forth, and goes down Westwood. We upsized Westwood Storm Sewer a number of years ago. Our standard is a ten-year story. So what that really means is, it's a one-in-ten chance. In our words, ninety percent of the rainfall events are covered and to stay within the storm sewer system. What we're talking about are rainfall events in which the intensity, the duration exceeds, you know, that remaining ten percent. So that is correct, and Stephanie's opening statement, yes, it's going to generate more runoff, but the downstream storm sewers still can function to our standards, as well as they're running it through their underground detention. So I'll let any school district folks correct me if I misunderstood, or Brian, but that's, that's the intent to handle stormwater.
Okay, appreciate that, Rob. I didn't know how to answer, you know, that email.
It's okay.
Because I didn't have the details, but I think that should solve the problem. Appreciate it.
You miss anything?
And that just slows down the exiting of the water over a period of time, as a...
Yep. And the maintenance of the underground detention, there's actually two. I believe there's one up north up here, and then there's one down here. So as part of, you know, just the overall expansion of the high school, a thought that's gone into it by the school district, I think it's been pretty comprehensive. And again, it's, yes.
All right.
Is it true that, and maybe Stephanie, I don't know who, but that when municipal facilities are developed, there is no standard for floodplain, flood, flooding? Did I hear that correctly?
So, this evening, the question really before you, and that's why we didn't evaluate the stormwater runoff, is that this, as Rob said, this, the stormwater issue came up with the demolition.
Right.
As soon as they realized that buildings were going to be raised, that kind of triggered them to know that something's probably going to happen on that property. What Rob just put up on the screen, that's what your request was this evening. Do you, is it okay if we reduce the parking setback and eliminate landscaping? There really was no way to evaluate the stormwater runoff.
Yeah.
As part of that request.
I understand that. But the regulations don't require stormwater?
No. He's just saying it was handled earlier in this process.
All right. Okay, thank, I just wanted to be sure.
And we're certainly not negating.
Yeah.
Of floodplain rules.
I'm on track. Okay, thanks. Just a stray phrase.
Thanks, Rob.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Is anybody from the applicant want to comment on anything? Since you're here.
So, Tricia Brookfront with the Manhattan School District, so I just want to make sure, if you have any questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer them. We also have our superintendent here. So, my big thing is I'm encouraging you to approve this parking lot. As you mentioned, yes, ninth graders are going to be up at the main campus, I'm not calling it the west campus, we're calling it Manhattan High School now. So with adding this parking lot is huge for us, because of all the staff, all the support staff, everybody that we have going up, this parking lot is necessary to have in order to handle all that parking, and try to get people off the streets, that are parking on the streets, and try to get people off of the zoo lot. That's our biggest goal, to have this parking, is to get all of our students where we can see them, have cameras on them, and see what's going on. That's a big goal for us, to have this parking lot.
Is that eighty, how many spots?
Because we are going to drop, eight stalls are ready to move our parking lot further to the east to get away from city zoo lot. We'll have about, about eighty stalls, eighty to eighty-five stalls.
And you hoping to have that ready here in a couple of weeks, or not?
Yep. If we can get the drawings done here by the end of next week, we hope to start construction by the end of the month, and probably should take about two months to get this done. Parking lots don't take that long. So hopefully have it up and running before the end of the semester.
Can you put your camera on the east end of the parking lot?
We will have cameras probably on the...
Rather than the west end?
We'll probably have them on the west, we'll have them on the north, and we'll probably have one on the east as well. We'll have them probably everywhere, honestly.
Not just a camera?
No, we'll have multiple cameras.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Tricia?
No.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right, we'll fill this open to public comment. If there's anybody who care to comment on this request by the school district, please come forward. Same thing. All right, if not, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion, Commissioner?
Mayor, I move that we find that the public, that the public interest to be served by the parking lot expansion at the USD three-eighty-three Manhattan High School outweighs the impacts upon legitimate community interests, and approve first reading of an ordinance reducing landscaping requirements and setbacks pursuant to section twenty-six-nine-D-four of the Manhattan Development Code and KSA twelve-seven-forty-eight for the USD three-eighty-three Manhattan High School, based on the recommendations of the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board and the findings in the staff report.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this. Please call the roll.
Just as a comment, I do have some sympathy for the possibility of containing the water underground from the runoff, but I just know that we need this parking at the school. And I would like to have the city and the school district more seriously consider those mitigation steps, and I know there's an extra expense, but anyway, so I'll be supporting it.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes. Sorry, I wasn't on the microphone.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Very good. Congratulations. We'll move on to item B, consider creating a benefit district for water and sanitary sewer improvements, and approve an agreement authorizing the property owner to instruct the associated public infrastructure. Fire away.
Good evening, Commissioners. Randy Duet, Assistant Director of Public Works for Water and Wastewater. As mentioned, we have a request for new outside-city water and sewer services for property located at forty-seven-oh-one and forty-seven-oh-three Stag Hill Road. Traditionally, this has been a type of item that has been an informal request and come to you in the consent agenda. Recently, city staff have started looking at a policy to review these a little bit more formally, to determine if it's in the best interest of the city to approve these requests without requiring an annexation, or denying their requests and requesting annexation. That policy is in development, but is pretty much on hold right now, waiting for some other projects. But we also thought it would be good to bring this to you, bring these requests to you as a more formal agenda, general agenda item, so we can discuss it. So that's why we're here today, to talk about primarily water and sewer service extensions. So as I mentioned, this is a forty-seven-oh-one Stag Hill Road. This is just south of Stag Hill and Scenic Drive. This is where the existing bubble wash is, that is, to my knowledge, it's still operational, but closed to public use, and the Paragon Sports Building. Just background, so the owner is Joe and Darlie McGraw. The request is for both water and sanitary sewer services. As mentioned, there's existing structures at forty-seven-oh-one Stag Hill Road, and they currently have water and sewer services from the city. That agreement was approved in July of two thousand and five. Again, those are the uses currently, car wash and a commercial warehouse building. Recently, the owner took a, took an item to the Riley County Commission to subdivide this property into three lots. Those existing structures that I mentioned are on Lot Two. Fast forward a little bit, so this is, this is the, pointer out here. So this existing Lot Two is where the existing buildings and services are. Lot One is here, is where they're proposing to add a new building for Paragon. And Lot Three is to the southwest, and it will, currently doesn't have any plans for a building. And Lot 3 is to the southwest and it will, currently doesn't have any plans for a building. The existing services, because at the time in 2005, this request came in, the property does not directly border city infrastructure. The services are a little bit non-standard, non-traditional. Those blue and green lines that you see are private service lines that extend not only into but past Stag Hill right of way, which is Riley County right of way, up to the water and sewer infrastructure that's, these transmission lines for the water and sewer that are, I believe, in former Fort Riley Boulevard right of way. So the last, last note there is that because this is a, is now a subdivided subdivision, it would not be particularly in our best interest to allow them to extend those services like they did in 2005. So our requirement was to extend public water and sewer mains to the property. So that's one of the items that we'll review here today. In the executive summary, you'll see we've got several items to talk about. The primary ones are new outside city water and sewer service agreement for Lot 1. This is the new building. Additionally, a new agreement for Lot 2 that would supersede the previous agreements done in 2005. Again, Lot 3 does not have any proposed building, so there's no request at this time, but they will have to come and make that request in the future if they desire to extend services to that lot. This fourth bullet item again is the agreement for construction of public infrastructure by owner and developer. This is our mechanism for funding public improvements where the developer or the owner wants to fund those improvements privately initially. That's a little bit different than what you see with new subdivisions that are being annexed into the city. Through that process, the owner will have approved plans submitted to the city, bonds, insurance, et cetera. Again, this is a more informal process traditionally that comes to you in a consent agenda item. Where this one is a little bit different is the owner has requested to utilize a benefit district. Once those improvements are done, their desire is to transfer this to a benefit district so that they can pay, pay for the improvements through special assessments. And so we have in front of you water and sewer petitions and resolutions. I believe that sanitary sewer improvement is about a $90,000 project and the water improvements are just under $80,000.
Is the city participating at all or is it strictly on them?
Zero participation of the city.
Good. Anything else?
So back to one of the main reasons we're here, this more, a little more formal process of reviewing these requests. These are some of the 16 criteria that staff review internally to make that determination if, if we see if it's beneficial to recommend extending those services or if we're going to come and recommend denying it with a request to annexation. These criteria are simply at this point for us to review. There's no, no metrics that we look at. You know, you can see a lot of these are answered yes or no, but there's no determinant amount of these. If we answer yes to so many, we're going to change our recommendation. These are just things that we review. Things like, does it abut city limits? Does it access the road via city right of way? A lot of, lot of items that Stephanie will, will consider for community development. Was it, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan for us? We want to know, is it a significant industrial user on the wastewater side? Are there going to be a high water user on the water side? So those are some of the things we looked at. Ultimately with this, this property, because it doesn't abut the city limits on any side, but it is within an area that as it, as it develops, these large tracts of lands and this corridor, those will likely be annexed in the city. So the thought is that this will eventually annex naturally as the area develops. So right now, our recommendation is, is to extend those services without the requirement for annexation. So that's really all I have to present to you on the request. The benefit district is something that is allowable by state statute. We've done these before where they're outside the city limits. Because this is the petitioner of one and they petition, yes, it bypasses the county commission and comes straight to you. Those statutes are mentioned in the executive summary. So it's, again, this is something that is up to your discretion whether you want to accept this outside city property and use our benefit district funding mechanism for them.
So two things on the, so will they ask the city to bond it and then have them pay it back this way or will they take care of all that loan financing and specials on their own?
Yes. So initially, this will be privately funded. And then once the project is completed, they will, similar to a benefit, any other benefit district inside the city, they'll, they'll submit to us documentation on the costs to make sure it matches the engineer's estimate that was in the petitions. And those would then go into temp note financing or bond financing. And then those, those proceeds would go back to the owner, but then they would, they would be paying it off over a 20-year period through the specials.
And they will go, once they're a direct customer, they won't have to pay that 20 or 25% upcharge for being out of?
Not true. As long as they are outside the city, they will still have to pay that surcharge. So their connection fees or their system development charges will be doubled. And their sewer fees, I think, are double and the water fees are a 50% surcharge. So until they are annexed or are part of the city limits, they will still pay those surcharges.
All right. That was all my questions. Rob, you got it?
I would just add that, and thanks Randy for, they will be an outside the city customer. They currently are an outside the city customer. And so it just expands it to more lots. Our typical agreement also, they agree to annexation in the future. So if we ever want to annex them, we can, it allows for that. That's part of that discussion that we're having as to ultimately reviewing criteria each time one of these outside the city requests comes, comes in. So that's all I wanted to add.
This looks like it's complicated and requires a lot of legal attention when it happens, which makes it expensive for the city. But my question is, what's the motivation? What would, if, if this were to proceed through the city, you gave us the costs to fund it privately, 90,000 sewer, 80,000 water. What would it cost, estimate, just an estimate, if the city did it? Or is there a cost savings? They're trying to save money?
No, not particularly. I mean, as was mentioned, they would benefit if they were in the city by paying
Yeah.
lower water and sewer rates. For them, because, because of some new standards that we put into those agreements, they also have to have a city building permit. So the building is built to our standards.
Sure.
Because the assumption is in the future it will be in the city. So they're, they're essentially doing everything as if they are in the city. It would be to their benefit to be in the city just for lower rates, although that's, that's up to the owner. We have traditionally offered our benefit district financing mechanism to.
Have you, okay.
To everyone. If, not, not many people, not many owners will use it. A lot of times it's, it's done, well, we did one in the Konza Sewer District that is currently wrapping up design where we were doing the project to kind of facilitate a solution to a septic system issue out in Stoddle and Johnson Road. That was a little different where it was us approaching owners to say, we need to do this project, but a benefit district is a tool to help defer the costs. This one, it's just the owner's, owner's request to help finance that project because quite frankly, they can get a better rate with the city than they can probably with their own banking institution. So I presume that is the primary benefit for them.
Okay, that's the, okay. I appreciate knowing them.
So we are taking on a little bit of that risk, but this is a relatively small risk, I think.
All right, any other questions for Randy? Thanks for the presentation here. Is there anybody who would like to publicly comment on this request? All right, hearing done.
I do have one more question. We see that in the presentation, it says three lots and then there are, the whole are three lots, but this proposal is for two lots.
Yeah, so the benefit district covers all three.
All three, okay.
The outside city agreements are only for the two lots where they would like to have city services at this time.
Because they already have it on the lot.
In the future, if this is annexed into the city at some point and they want to extend service to Lot 3, if they, if they do that via public improvement and then maybe they want to do a benefit district again, that lot would have to pay for those improvements.
Is there a different water rate charge on Lot 3 than on Lot 1 and 2? Because those are considered separately?
No.
Okay. If, does the city have to maintain like water hydrants or?
There will be a new fire hydrant on the north side of Stag Hill Road.
Okay.
It wasn't required necessarily, but they, they offered to put that in. It was to their benefit.
Yeah.
So there's no fire sprinkler system requirements here.
Okay.
So then, and it's within, that's one of the criteria that fire department reviewed is that it is within response time for a couple of their stations.
It's really close to the airport.
Yes.
Fire station. Okay, thank you. Appreciate you asking, answering my questions.
All right, any other questions for Randy? All right, and there is no public comment, so I'm ready for a motion if anybody would like to read that long thing.
Okay, I guess I'll read the long motion.
It's long.
I move that we find the petition sufficient and approve Resolution Number 080123B and Resolution Number 080123C, finding the projects advisable and authorizing construction for water WA 2311 and sanitary sewer SS 2307 improvements respectively, authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement for the construction of public infrastructure by owner and contractor for the Stag Hill Business Community Public Water WA 2311 and sanitary sewer SS 2307 improvements and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute an outside city water and sanitary sewer service agreements with Joseph D. and Darlene R. McGraw to connect the structures for lots 1 and 2 of the Stag Hill Business Community Edition, Riley County, Kansas, otherwise known as 4701 and 4703 Stag Hill Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the motion. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
All right, that is the last general agenda item. We'd like to say welcome to Kristin. Thanks for coming back and hanging with us for a little while. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the August 1st, 2023 City Commission meeting.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Please call the roll again.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
That's it, the meeting adjourned.